Look like a bunch of chipmunks.
Was posted about.
Gary, ready?
Motion come out in session six thirteen.
They say it's like a whole.
So we have a first and a second. All in favor say aye. All right, we're back in session. Um, okay. Okay, so, um. No, um, and so what we've done is we've appropriately advised our city attorney to take the action that we need him to do. So we'll look forward to your update at the next meeting. Okay, um, so the next one new business, we have a street closure for the doghouse on, on, what was it? It's September twenty ninth?
Yeah, I gotta look, but it's September twenty ninth.
September twenty ninth, and I believe, what time was it again?
Um, let me look here. It was from, I believe. Have it up. I have, yeah, I put it down on here. Um, one to six P M. Because she said either it's like one or two to six, so I just put one P M.
Yep, one to six P M. They wanted the, um, from the quarter over to the.
Second Street to the Bargain Basement.
Yeah.
Yeah, Second Street to Bargain Basement.
I can make a motion that we approve the street closure for Dog House and the Sunday Cafe from, on September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four, from one to six P M, between Second Street and just east of the Bargain Basement.
Second.
We have the first and the second. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we're on to the really fun stuff. We're gonna do our first reading of our twenty twenty four budget. Now, remember, this is a first reading, so it's a lot of numbers, and so we're gonna kind of gloss over it, because I know that, um, we had maps come in, which is a, um, state organization to come in and go over that. And so there really hasn't been a lot of time for the council members to actually peruse through this. But because of the deadlines that are required for the state, we need to have our first reading tonight. So with that.
The first thing that we need to do is approve, um, the C P I, uh, the, the State Journal, Minnehaha Auditor, sent me the, um, max levy. And it looks like our max levy is three hundred nineteen thousand five seventy nine. The C P I is three percent. If, if we don't take that max levy, you can't go back.
So. So what this means is that this is the standard, um, piece of the pie that we get of property taxes. That's, that's what this is. It's Baltic has typically taken three percent, if not, I think, the last, when I was reviewing this before, I think they took up two point nine percent once, and it's always been right at this threshold. If, if a city wants more of the property taxes, then you have to do an opt out kind of a thing, and it goes to vote for the people and all that kind of stuff. So three percent is pretty standard. So max levy can take. It's a good idea, but we need a motion to show that we're gonna do it, so that way Lacy can report that. So I just need somebody to make a motion that says that we're going to, what is it? Opt in or opt out? What is it called?
Opt outs cannot receive more plus C P I, so.
So often.
How about, say, we opt for the three percent? And we'll do a little bit of an.
Sure.
We opt for this.
Opt for the three percent of C P I.
Okay, I got a first.
Second.
So you're gonna.
Steve's got it.
Okay, Steve's got the second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. So we have that. So on the next sheet, what you can see is the, um, what that would look like. So it's, it's just the numbers that the state had provided to us. So we knew what that meant when we were voting on that. So that's what that page is. When we go to the next one, um, before, um, in the previous administration, it was really difficult to find this information. So Lacy did a really good job of trying to pull this for us. Um, this next page is the fund positions. These are the different funds that we have to run the city. And this is basically a snapshot of where we're at right now. Um, I just want to draw attention to the, um, or first of all, the one oh one general fund, just step in at any time if I do this wrong. Um, the general fund, typically, we like to see a little bit, um, more in that two seventy nine is okay, but we would really like to see more of like five hundred thousand in that is what we would be ideal for us. Um, we have the various different park funds. All of these are allocated for very, um, special functions, and that's why the money is in those buckets. Um, the water fund, this is that, um, this is for all the projects that we have. We will be reimbursed for this, so this is not gonna be a negative. But it's just the current state of where it's at now. We just need all of the paperwork to come in. So this is all aligned with the ARPA loans and all that stuff that we've been doing all year long. So this isn't gonna be in the red at the end, but it is in the red right now, because we have not received the reimbursement.
What'll be the reimbursement? Is it the exact amount, or more, or less?
It'll be exact, from what I understand. And so, um, any questions on special funds?
Why is the sewer fund shouldn't, shouldn't that be in the red as well, or we could funding out of that, because there's sewer project the same time going on, right?
There was much more, um, there was much more I S G engineering fees in the water than there was in sewer.
Okay, so it was the split of the project.
Because one of them is a split fifty fifty water sewer, and the other one is just water, so, you know what I'm saying? So there was a lot more water.
That is probably because the sixth to seventh street loop did not include sewer, it was still in water. And wasn't the third and fourth loop? Also, the fourth street, that's not water and sewer, is it? Or is it just water?
It's water.
Going from fourth to fifth?
Yeah, you're not gonna do one without blue jobs.
Oh, okay. I just thought it was water, they could. So anyway.
I thought it was changing the sewer all. I could be wrong.
Okay.
I had to look in my notes. Like, it was just a loop. I could be wrong.
You?
Wrong before.
Once.
Yeah, once.
Okay, so. So those are the funds.
Well, hang on, I got a question. Um, you got the third penny sales tax, and you got the street assessment cash. Why is that not being used, or?
The street assessments, we were banking to slurry sim.
Okay.
And then, um, the third penny, where is that one?
It's right above the date.
I think some of that is just because I, I wasn't aware of what third penny was until recently, and so I think we're gonna try to allocate that in some of these places where we can help where we're low.
Okay.
Um, but there's only certain things you can use it for, like promotions and events and things like that.
Okay.
So that was, that was a surprise bucket for us.
Yeah.
Which is good. Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna go to general fund then. So this is the revenue. So we have the general fund revenue. I think if, if you recall the way that we've been doing budgeting in the past, it gets a little weird, because we do the actual, which is January to August, which means that, you know, this is kind of where we're at today, and then we do the proposal, and we're estimating the, the revenue that we'll have for the rest of the year. So there's some areas that we got more revenue than we expected, and there are some areas that we got less revenue than expected. So it all kind of, um, you know, we, we're still money ahead, not by much, but we're not in the hole, which is a beautiful thing. And that's really the takeaway on this. We have a couple of notes of things that we do need to readjust again with the maps advisement, so we're going to, um, take a look at that. Um, a couple of questions, just to clarify, the rental property of City Hall. Um, we, i- if I recall correctly, and we're gonna go double check this, is we pull revenue from other departments to rent City Hall, is what I understand that we do. And, um, I'm gonna go get the exact description, because Linda did a really good job last year explaining that, and so, um, we'll find that out and get you more information on that. Um.
I didn't know. One of the questions I had was in donation. I know we had gotten a twenty five thousand dollar check from Hefty, and he was to, to pay a hundred thousand, so I didn't know if it was reasonable to be expecting the other seventy five thousand, or if that's like, you know what I mean? If I should be.
Yeah, that's a tricky one. And so you don't really wanna budget for it.
Right.
And you kind of wanna have it be surprised, but at the same time, we know it's out there. I wouldn't budget for it either.
Plus it's surprising, well, it's not bad.
It's not bad at all. So, I mean, for, for the most part, we're, we're money ahead. Not by much, but we're doing okay. Um, any other thoughts on that?
Just was excited to see we doubled what we budgeted for for camping.
That's right.
That was awesome.
Yeah.
We have a bunch of people this year that really enjoyed coming out, that just came the rest of the, the rest of the year, and they're still coming, so it's.
It seems like it's been open a lot more this year, too, than you guys here, so.
Well, that's good.
Weather permitting, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a financial idiot. So everything under twenty five budget. That is what we're allocating to those uh, areas, or is that the money that we're, you're estimating?
This is what it, this is what's.
Just the money coming in. And you'll notice, I mean, it doesn't, I tried to make like an I M twenty eight situation next to the one. Just for information.
That's right. Thank you for bringing that up. Because of that ballot measure, I M twenty eight, uh, if it passes, we could potentially lose forty three thousand dollars in revenue. So there is your disparity. And, um, if it doesn't pass, then we would stand to be able to keep that sales tax.
We should have had that on our agenda, I think.
Well, that's kind of. Oh, you mean to pass, or whatever. Well, you know, you certainly can discuss it, but we can't pass a resolution tonight. We can do it at the next meeting. Um. So, yeah, I mean, there's definitely an effect there. I mean, even without the forty three thousand dollars, we can potentially make ends meet, but it's not great.
And I'm sure her estimation was based on prior years, which we had only budgeted for two hundred and seventy thousand of sales tax, and this year we're already at three hundred and twenty two thousand, so it's probably well over forty three thousand that we would be in.
Well, that's consumable, so, and remember, our, our sales tax, the reason why I believe that we're over on that is because of the building that we've had. And so, um, that's gonna be a big portion of that, because the building supplies always gives a nice bump to a city, I mean municipality, because of all of those buildings it has. And then also with all of the street work that we've done, um, our restaurants and Classic Corner have said they've just been crazy busy because of all of the workers that have been here and are eating and, you know, getting, you know, refreshments and things like that while they're in town. So that's, that's been very helpful to us. So, you know, cost benefits of everything. So, um, the I M twenty, I mean, obviously, no, no town wants to lose their income. Um, but it's a matter of the voters educating themselves. That's something that's kind of out of our personal hands. Um, as, um, Alderman, you can certainly educate your constituents about the pros and cons of that, so the taxpayers can make a more educated decision.
Could you, could you clue me in on this liquor license line?
The liquor license, they need to pay for liquor licenses. So the liquor licenses are fifteen hundred. So the doghouse pays for fifteen hundred, and Classic Corner pays fifteen hundred.
And so where we've got actual January twenty four to August twenty four, and it's zero. That's nothing has come in?
That's because you'll see down below where it's in kind of a purplish color. I had highlighted it because it looks like it came in under operating agreement, so I was just kind of wondering, do we wanna move those over to that G L um, instead of operating agreement?
Got it. So sometimes, um, in the past, because we, we didn't use the standard accounting, some, when we learn certain accounts need to be used, then we just have to move the ones over there.
And this purple line, that was motion.
Yes.
I mean, that'd be a good change, this question.
Yeah. Let's just see how we do that from budget to budget.
Yeah.
And so, um, also, uh, Lacy had brought up a good point, that since we spend a lot of time managing the sales tax of the liquor licenses, should a portion of that go towards, um, our wages? Because a portion of the wages come from streets, they come from sewers, but I think the liquor also needs to be going to wages, because we administer.
It's a big buck there, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of makes sense.
So that's another thing that we need to take a, a look at in the second run and try to figure that out. Um, because that's obviously new to us, and so, um, that will play a, a part in our expenses. So any other questions on this? So general fund expenses, again, this is a nice fun multi-page report, which is super great. Um, but, um, again, we look at what the proposed budget would be. And then we look at, um, what we've expended so far, so the actuals, and then what we estimate what it would be. Um, I am not gonna ad nauseam go through this entire thing. Um, because I know none of you had had the opportunity to do that, but what I'd like you to do is take some time to go through it and have your questions, call Lacy directly, and then we'll do a summary of all of it. On the second reading. Um, let's see here.
I will say, um, I, I didn't have anything in elections. And then maps said, you know, even if there isn't an election next year, you might wanna allocate some fund there.
I think that that's a consistent policy that I voted past administrations to.
So I did end up putting some in the wages and, and other expense, just in case, and preparing for the twenty twenty six.
Right. So you'll notice, the one thing I do wanna say is that if you look at the expenses for twenty twenty five, we estimated at, um, one million um, five thousand, and, um, we're looking at one million thirty nine thousand in revenue. That's only a disparity of thirty five thousand dollars. That is frightening for us. So the I M twenty eight is going to be impactful to us. Um, with only, because see, if, if it passes and we don't get that revenue, if you look at the second column on revenue, that would be estimated revenue of one million thirty nine thousand. Our estimated expenses is one million five thousand. That is a disparity of thirty four thousand dollars, you guys. That is really too close to call. Um, and those are, I mean, you can't manage a city on surprises and hope, right? So at least here, without it, we have, you know, you know, almost an eighty thousand dollar, which still is not ideal. That is not ideal. We run very lean here in Baltic, very, very lean. And we talked about that last week, about how the revenue sources for a city are quite limited. You know, we're limited to this three percent of the property taxes. We're limited to our liquor license revenue. I mean, you have it all right here. This is where we make our money. And it's very, very limited about what we can do. Um, remember, we still have to absorb that operational cost for the water bills, because remember, we had that deficit, because we weren't taking care of the operation. We also, um, I'm not sure if it's planned in there, but these are the things I need you to guys to take notes on, to make sure that we have them all covered properly. Remember, we're gonna be sunsetting probably the water meters. So that's going to be coming into play. Also, we have, um, okay, thank you, yeah. Um, so just put that in your pocket for a second, okay? Because then we go to wages. So wages are pretty predictable. Um, we have, um, you know, it's broken. In, in the past, this has been very nebulous to see. So Lacy was kind enough to make it very clear where everything's coming from. And so we haven't had this tool in the past, so I really appreciate that she did this, because everybody gets paid a portion from different departments, and here you can actually see where that's coming from. It's really useful for people who don't understand how municipals pay for things. And so I appreciate this tool. It kind of speaks for itself. She also did, um, a rate increase table from three, four, and five percent. I think we can all appreciate with the cost of living. I don't know where we're at with cost of living and expenses, but if it's above five percent, we may wanna consider that to make sure that our city workers are taken care of. Because if we don't take care of them, we don't run. So, um, could you make a note to verify what they estimate the cost of living increase is gonna be? Because it's gonna be a big deal. I fear it's gonna be over five percent is my point. That's my point.
And I know another city that's probably, but I, I'm not gonna.
Well.
But, but that might, that was just maybe that city, so.
Well, and also, I mean, if you look at prices, I don't think that the increase is five percent. So that's something to think about. Special funds. Um, but these are, um, allocated pockets, um, for very specific uses. And so, um, this, this details out that third penny and the street assessment. So this is just more of a breakdown of the other one.
And I was wondering, too, I don't know, it says software can be utilized with that third penny, so I didn't know if that could be some of the G words.
Oh, that's something. Let's, let's verify that, okay? So like we said, we just had somebody go through this with us, and so we're, we're, you know, in under thirty six hours of getting this information, so good job putting that together. Um, also, when we go to the loan breakdown, we do have, um, loans in place, obviously. And so this is the status of those things. Um, didn't we pay off a loan? There it is. You have the pickup, it just got paid off, which is nice.
And then we're only a year out from paying off the dump fund.
So the nice thing is, is we are paying some things off, but because we run such a lean fund, you know, we need to make sure that we're, we're mindful of that. Um, and obviously, we're just starting all these S R F loans, and everybody fills that in their pocket with whatever lease and fees sort of stuff. Right?
In anything, just in case, or mechanical issues? Given the channels for the, you know, things.
Maintenance. We've got some, um, like repairs and maintenance on, on equipment and things like that in the expenses, so I've made sure, like, for streets and parks, too.
Typically out of streets.
Money out of there.
Yeah. So then, if, just to be, make it more confusing, you'll see that we have the general fund expenses, and then we have water and sewer expenses, right? And, um, we probably should have put expenses on, she said, so confusing. That's okay. Um.
Well, actually, this is expenses and revenue, and so it's water, it's furniture.
Thank you.
Revenue.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a liar. Um, but because, um, we run some things out of general fund, we run some things out of water and sewer, that's why she needs to split this out, because that's how it works in the balance sheet. That's how we pay for a city. A lot of our stuff comes out of water revenue, and a lot of our stuff comes out of sewer revenue. And so this is her breaking that out by the percentage that we're required to as a city, to be able to properly pay for things and keep the the cash flow clear. Okay. Does that make sense? You have a, you have a look on the.
Oh, no, sorry. I was coming in the midway, I was trying to read something.
Okay.
I, I wanna note, the reason I had that one services highlighted is because it, it does look alarming that January through August, there is that large amount in services, but that is, again, that I S G, that we're gonna be reimbursed for.
So, yeah, it outflows through. So, um, this letter here, the Minnehaha Community Water Court, that is, um, just a reminder that, um, fees increase on a regular basis. And that we need to make sure that we're, um, going to cover that. But we also have to cover S R F loans. And so with the new water project coming, there's going to be additional fees. Is that gonna hit us in twenty twenty five? Is it gonna hit us in twenty twenty?
For this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it says that the water use in January, that's billed in February. Yeah, so. So three.
Is this baked into the, to the budget now?
Um, yes, that we add is the, the amount. That's what maps help me with.
Okay.
So that's, that's in with that.
So the new fees are gonna be baked into the budget, so that's all included in there. Um, is, is this inclusive, though? Because I thought there was additional fees.
Do I mean to talk about the rate covenant?
Yes.
Okay, so every year, S R F, um, or the D A N R sends us a rate covenant form we have to fill out, basically saying, this is what we brought in for revenue, this is what we paid out for the water and sewers. Um, and, and it has to be a hundred and ten percent above. I don't know how to put that, a hundred and ten percent is where it needs to be at.
So, so whatever our billable is, or whatever a hundred percent of pain for everything is, we have to show that we are receiving a hundred and ten percent.
As a cushion.
Yeah, as a cushion to operate, so we can't run even. We have to run at a hundred and ten percent. And we have to prove that to them to keep the financing of the S R F loans.
And we are running at negative percents. So they said, it's okay, you know, we can fix it. So she just said that we are gonna have to adjust our water and sewer rates, um, because we have to prove that we're at a hundred and ten.
Do we have a percentage? That we need to adjust?
I can get it for you. It's, I have it over there. It's, she didn't have me put it on there, because she said, you know, once you're negative, it doesn't matter. But she said we are gonna have to meet and go over what it's gonna take to, to put you at a hundred and ten percent.
So that's coming, and it won't be a choice.
So she will meet with you, then?
Right. Me and Sophie are gonna be with her.
Okay.
Just wants to see something.
It's not gonna happen. Um.
That, you know. Yeah, interesting, it's happening yesterday.
Yeah. A half a point? Are you kidding me?
Crazy.
Oh, my gosh, that is so risky, a half a point?
Yeah.
Another half a point?
No. Quarter, quarter percent each time.
Wow.
I guess choose between recession and inflation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sounds lovely. So let's talk about this last piece of paper here. Uh, Justin was kind enough to give us some estimates when we were talking about the, um, amenities that people were talking about, they would like to have. Um, here's some broad-based cost of what these amenities would be. And so, again, we can have as much as we want in this city, as long as the citizens are willing to pay for it. Um, we can continue to apply for grants. We will continue to apply for grants. However, um, we're going to be at a point with some things that it will be required that we have to upgrade, like the, I fear that the water tower and the lagoons are going to be coming sooner than I want them to. And, um, but at the same time, um, I do think it's healthy for a city to balance amenities with necessities. Um, we had talked at the last meeting about how we did not get the grant for the Baltic Heights improvements. And so here are, um, the numbers for those capital improvement plans. So I don't know if you guys wanna chew on this, if you wanna think about this, if you wanna tell Lacy what, or if you've had a chance to talk to your constituents, to see how they feel about these things. But these are things that we absolutely can finance and bake it into our revenue plan to make sure that the citizens get what they want, but we need to bake it in now. So we can have it in action in the spring, so when people see those fees increase, they also see what they're getting. Because remember, we have part, we approved these ARPA loans, what, two years ago? And now we're finally seeing them. So, um, the nice thing is, is the park amenities, we can turn a little bit faster, but we would need to start getting quotes and things like that now. So that's something you guys are going to need to weigh in on and tell us what to do. You can have all of them if you want. Just depends on what you wanna do. Um, another thing that we can do is we could go to the school for the ball field improvements and see if they would want to invest in that, since, you know, one of the biggest reasons why we need ball field improvements is because we have sanctioned softball now.
Nope, nope, they leave the lights, right?
Well, then the school's gonna have to find a way to, to pay for them, because we are, we're, we're not.
And any funds that are gonna be surplus into putback in the general fund?
But I'm aware.
Probably as the checkbook. Let's go.
So the, the thing is, is that, um, the lagoon improvements, we're probably gonna have to look at a way to do that. Um, the sidewalk design, um.
There's limitations, right, to sewer, of what we can do for allocating money to other things. Could that be tied in?
I think.
Sewer money and water money is earmarked for sewer water.
Right.
E K O transfer. Lagoon, would that technically be considered a part of?
That, that would be for sewer.
If we're adjusting that , we're gonna be a hundred and ten percent, we should have surplus to bill over time.
Not if we're required to have a hundred and ten percent.
Yeah.
See, so here's what's happening, is, um, we are having, we are forced to be in a position to take care of necessities of a city that should have been planned for, for years and years and years and years and years. Cities, responsible cities, put away funds, and, and they have these funds, and they, they put money towards these funds. So when we get into a situation like this, many, many administrations knew that the water tower need was coming. Many administrations knew that the lagoons were gonna be at capacity. And so I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but I'm just saying that this is stuff that we should have had in a fund for a very long time, that we just continued to build as a city. And now we're in a situation where we're gonna have to figure out how to vote pay for it, because we never planned. So, and it, it just is what it is. You know, and, you know, I'm not a fan of shooting the messenger, but I'm just telling you the way it is, it's who I am, it's whatever. Exactly. And so, um, but I also know that, um, that splash pad is something that the kids would love. I know that we have a pool service, but we also have a. I know that we have a pool service, but we also have a. I know, we can have that, you know, maybe we'll just get a professional ice skating rink and not get either home. And so, um. The, the nice thing about the splash pad is that that does serve the kids that can't ride the bus. So then we're doing both. You have the kids that can ride the bus, cause they're old enough to ride the bus, and the splash pad takes care of the kids that can't ride the bus.
Oh, I guarantee you, the day they use it, two, three thousand.
Uh, that splash pad is gonna get used to full capacity. And so.
Sounds like a fundraiser to me.
Well, we can do that too. What's that?
We'll use a lagoon every month of the year. We'll use a water tower every month of the year. How many months of the year are we going to use an outdoor splash pad?
Well, it's an amenity.
Not to pay our kids.
It's something to give, it's something to give back to the community. You gotta give more than just utilities, utilities, utilities. You gotta keep your parking rec stuff going, you can't just focus on. Just utilities.
Ryan, I, I tend to see your point there. But as somebody who's had bad water pressure for a while and heard multiple concerns about that.
That's.
Well, the water tower, it still fills twice a day. So. So it's a capacity issue as well.
I think somebody, and I'm, I'm wrong, Steve, but did you tell me that, that power being filled twice a day is not good for the water tower?
Did you hear that, Steve?
Did you?
I said, um, did you tell me that you thought that that water tower being refilled twice a day was probably not a good thing for the water tower?
I know it's not. The structure can't handle that much stress. Uh, contracting, extracting, it, it will, uh, create issues with that water tower. I've taken a lot of them down and most of them is because of the, uh, water pressure, um, fluctuations.
Well, we've had a leak there before, so.
Yep, and that's the reason for it, because the, the metal is not made to that many times the fill. And eventually, we're gonna be three times a day, and that's actually gonna even increase the chances of failure. I think, uh, Harrisburg had that same issue.
So there's things we have to take care of, and I don't think we're in a place of choice.
Well, I think you guys.
Well, and also you recall that, um, last spring, Justin had told us that our lagoons were already at capacity, and that's if we didn't have a wet season. Right. So, those are things, I, I don't know how we get around it, you guys. And even if we say, yes, we're gonna do it now. To do a water tower plan, we have to do, and, you know, an assessment, we have to do a design, we have to figure it out, we have to figure. I mean, this is not something where we say yes now and we get it next week. It's gonna be one or two years before we get it. The lagoon plan, I know that that's in the C I P plan. Um, I know Justin and Ryan have done extensive work on that to try to figure out what we need there. So that's something we're absolutely gonna have to look at. So we're, we're nowhere near done here. The nice thing is, and I don't know how else to say this, is that we do, I mean, the growth is welcome. And it also helps dispense the costs. But that also gives us an essential need for commercial development, because that also helps offset these costs. Now, I know that we've been doing, this administration has been doing everything we can to try to bring businesses into this, into the city. However, the economy is not predisposed to commercial construction right now. It's just not, not in this town. And as far as residential development and the incentives that are given. You know, Sioux Falls takes all the Minnehaha stuff, and then there are surrounding counties that have different programs that'll,'ll incentivize people to build. We don't get to take advantage of that, cause we're Minnehaha. So.
Well, we got the one, there's the one deferred tax.
I'm just talking to builders and why they're not building.
Yeah.
Because they're like, you know, gee, if you guys were in Minnehaha County, we could get this, this, this and this. But because you're in Minnehaha County, we can't get that. And we're really not in a position to be offering, you know, mass incentives, because we run on a shoestring as it is. You know, cause then people are asking us, you know, like, well, what can you do for us? And I'm like, welcome you when you get here, you know? And then we do have TIF, there are, there is that TIF. For development, and, and the people that are building are taking advantage of those TIFs. And so, I mean, we, we, it is not for lack of trying. It's, it's for not a lot, I mean, we're trying. And so, um. But we're in a position, you guys, I mean, it's, it's no joke.
Is there any, is there any extra funds in water to fund an engineer plant towards the water tower?
Potentially.
To get it started?
Potentially. So.
Oh, because that raises, that raises concern with Seeset.
It.
You know, because.
You know, the feeling, what's really sad about that is we've known this for years, years.
That's fine.
Years.
So.
So here we are.
Well, there was slated.
Yeah, but that was.
So here's what I have to say, when you're talking to people and you're explaining them, the reason why we're in this position. It's because people didn't want their fees raised for years, so that the government, the administrations were scared to do it. So now we're in a position where we're gonna have to do it.
Yeah, there's no choice.
And so if, we're not. This is not the way cities should have been ran, but this is where we are. And we're in a situation where we have to do it. Otherwise, we're gonna be in a world of hurt if something happens to our water tower and then we shut it down, and then what do we do? You know, and so that, I mean, we're. We're in a spot. So we are, we have to ask Justin what it's gonna cost, we have to figure out what to do. We have to be able to talk to MAPS and figure out what we need to do to be able to approve, you know, fees. Hopefully, people continue to build. We have a lot of different things going on. We have houses going up, we have developers coming up. We have, um, we have multiple developers asking about building in Baltic and what land is available. We have multiple commercial landowners that I hope are trying to seek people that are wanting to build. You know, I've had two separate conversations this week with organizations. And, and I continue to talk to the existing landowners about their plans, and they keep saying they wanna wait till after the election. Um, so, you know. John and I have had extensive conversations about what our alternatives are and where we can go and what we can do to help build. In our community to help offset these kind of expenses. It, but it doesn't change the fact that the expenses are gonna be coming.
Well, there's a mindset on the part of private sector. To approach a government entity with the idea of what are you going to do for us?
Yes, yeah, what are you doing for me?
And that, that's, that's a systemic problem in this entire state, and that's why our property tax structure is. Okay, so this, there any bad. Taxes, that eleven three every year that comes in?
Yeah.
Okay, so why can't that be allocated towards. Engineering or whatever, or.
It has, it lists out what it can be used, it can, and you say promotions.
Promotions.
It has to be these things. I don't, and I can look into it more, but I think it's, that one is. Only two certain items, but it might be something that we can use.
Well, if, if we, if we had to move stuff around, I can.
There's, there's an issue moving around, but it's the very real issue that we're gonna have to figure out how to finance more stuff.
Yeah.
So, and that's gonna come through fees.
Your squirrel money, uh, splash pad over.
I want it more than you.
That water, Ryan, beautiful, you have a floor to use that water. Water here. Ryan, the upside of a basketball court, that's it, need that water. We save all that water, save the stress, you wanna put that splash pad in the next thing you know.
You have a, you have a recurring system with pad. Recycles.
Recycles.
That's filters.
Into the air, into the air.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anywho.
There's two ways to do a splash pad. You recycle and you do that, you recycle it, you treat it basically like an above ground swimming pool. So that takes a lot of maintenance, you know, to recycle it, and then you have to treat the water and you have to do all the things. Or you just do one way, where you just tap it into the water system, and it goes, it's like a fraction of the cost.
Yeah.
And then you can put it on a timer too, where it's self-serve, so you hit the timer, kind of like a, you know, like in the, um, hotel, when you turn on the timer, it's the same thing.
It's a start button, and it goes like the ten minutes.
Yeah, cause like Beaver Creek has it, that's where we got the original idea, wasn't it? When we started talking about that? And so, um. I think that's probably an overestimate of what that has to be. It might be an overestimate of it, but it also might be cleaning things out to make space for it. So, okay. You know, hey, we could do that too.
Nice looking slide. What do you need now?
So basically, that was, that was the question, it's, it's the first reading, we wanted to go over this. You guys need to talk to your constituents and see what, um. What projects they wanna move forward with, or help them understand why we maybe voted with certain projects. And, um, and that is where we are for the first reading of our budget. We have, I mean, we have more work to do.
Is there any ordinance number?
I was trying to figure that out, but if you go by the next number from the last. The very last ordinance, or I didn't know if there was a certain set of numbers only for appropriation, so I'll find out.
Sure.
But I have the appropriation typed up, I'll just have to switch it, based on how we do all this budget stuff, so.
Lacy, um, Lacy, did you, um, touch on the fact that the sheriff's department is raising their rates?
I was gonna ask that, I have to.
I have that, it feels like everyone wanted.
If they're raising the rates.
I think I see the presence, buddy, I'd just like to see.
I'd like to see the action.
Yeah, yeah, that's the state I'd like to see.
They should only get paid on the number of tickets.
You think they should be got a commission?
Is the raised amount.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, so that's the amount. Cause they sent me, oh, here it is, oh, no, that's somebody.
Okay, you know, years ago. There was. Ellis is twenty five through town. You know, T Ellis wrote, the Ellis, little bitty town, is twenty five through town. They obey twenty five through that town because of the, the presence, they're not even there anymore. And I will not go over twenty five through that town, just because I know.
You have a lot of stuff.
You never know when they'll spot you.
Exactly. Is there any way that we could get a representative to one of the meetings before the end of the year and say. Have a, have a conversation. That, and, and it sucks because it's all downhill, so everybody speeds through.
I, I gotta tell you, I think really the challenge is the fact that it's a rotating staff.
And I do know that the, um, higher, um. And the police department prefer to patrol out here because it's closest to Falls. And they can take care of that in the morning, and then they're, you know, off to another place, so. That was told to me by a police officer, or sheriff.
Do you do when I see them, you can just see, like, usually, I go over by the storage area, or right next to the school, or like right across. And then sometimes.
They're doing a great job of sitting out there for school.
Yeah, they're always.
But unfortunately, it's not that twenty minutes, that's the problem.
Yeah.
It's the.
Three hours in.
I actually just thought, me, I have only sharing, we had somebody pulled over on the other side of Delray. The other day, I was shocked in the knees.
What I found awesome was that, there was one Sunday night, I was working overnight, so I had a hand felt, all in. Uh, there, leaching water. And we took one row back and forth, Maple. And I seen that, but he was sitting there, for three rounds, he was sitting there. He was sitting here, then he moved to the old schoolhouse, then he moved to the river bridge, all for one person, pulled over one person, and all of them, I saw. So, you know, they are out there and, and I respect everything, anything they do, but it's just. I have kids in this town, and contractors, and myself.
So it says that the. Annual rate is set at seventy eight thousand six seventy eight, and last year it was seventy six, three forty nine. They, their hourly rate went from forty one ninety five to forty three twenty three.
And that's already a budget?
Mm-hmm, I, I went out with their budget letter, I've, I've got a few budgeting.
And also remember, another thing that they need to make is our ticket book updated. Remember, don't they have to have the, the tickets? We have to have the, I must not have been, that lines of fees in the ticket book to be able to do that.
Oh, the resolution for the, okay, yep.
Maybe we could get that done by the end of the year, I hope.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
That's with the ordinances, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we have to have all that in by, just a reminder, November.
Oh, yeah.
I talked to Ed today about that.
That's a big job.
Okay. Um, any other questions, guys? Um, so John, if I, if I'm understanding you, we need to have an ordinance attached to this first reading. Okay, so we'll, we'll amend that when we do the minutes, we'll have, um. We'll have an ordinance attached to that, so it's done properly.
Did you mostly approve the budget or?
No, there's no motions for first reading.
First readings.
It's just a FYI, so that way you're more prepared to go talk to your constituents about these issues. Cause there's a lot of decisions you guys have to make in this next meeting, so you'll wanna review minutes from the last meeting. Cause there's a lot of stuff we pushed to next month that absolutely has to get decided. So, and you guys have letters to gather. For that resolution by next week, and then you guys have, um.
Your water, water things, you need to take pictures of.
Yes, and then the, the water pipes.
Sent to anybody, never got a response.
I'm trying to have an automatic response.
So if you hear back from us, it's not okay, if you hear nothing, no news.
Hey, Lacy, what's the cell, or what's the number that I text that to?
Nine zero six? They put it on our website.
Nine zero six one six one one.
Okay, I'll do that.
I would love that. That's what I tried.
I know, that was my joke last time too, isn't it? Okay, so I think that's everything we need to cover, guys.
Make the motion to adjourn at six fifty nine.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Baltic.
Take care, Steve.
I'm going to bed, bye.